I began working with the Barbara Snyder Foundation around 2005 because I wanted to make sure more law enforcement officers in Minnesota receive crisis intervention training. I have been on the Minneapolis Police Chiefs Advisory Council since 2008, as well as many other advisory councils over the last 20 years, including the State Advisory Council on Mental Health and the State Ombudsman Committee for Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities. My degrees are in Management and Organizational Development. I want to commend Chief Harto and her leadership skills and her management expertise to quickly and effectively implement and achieve major changes in the Minneapolis Police Department. I have never seen a leader in such a large organization be focused, so focused, not only on people in the organization's needs, but also the people in the community's needs, and work so quickly to achieve proactive and productive changing goals in her organization. The Barbara Snyder Foundation has been working with the Minneapolis Police Department since Barbara's death in 2000, and we will continue to work with them in the future. As a person who lives with a chronic mental health disorder, I want to thank Chief Harto, the mayor, and the city council, as well as the Minneapolis Police Department members for always working to make Minneapolis a safer place to live for everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. Pastor Graham, and then Chuck Turchek, please, and then Steve Kramer, if everyone can start to gather themselves. Pastor Graham.
I'm Pastor Charles Graham, Minneapolis, Minnesota, Macedonia Baptist Church, where God lives. I come today to talk about Chief Janee Harto and her reappointment. Since I've been a part of this city, I've been here for 46 years now, and I've noticed the changes in the city over and over and over again. But I notice now that as Chief Harto sits in the seat of Chief of Police, there has been some changes made. The changes come from within the police department itself. I see her changing the culture of the police department from within, and I think the whole process is that she's going to change that from within, and then we'll go into the city and make it a community relationship that we're building here. The only way the police department can work in our city is that we work together as a city rather than ours and yours. There are times when we think that the city belongs to just us, and that some of us think that the city belongs to them. So while Chief Harto is putting together a plan that we are building and working together as one unit, where we can be happy and everybody looking for the same things out of the city, we can build a city that will work together. So I look forward, I look forward to thanking Chief Harto for the hard work that she's doing. She's got a real heart for the city. She loves everybody, and she's trying to make this thing work. So we can pull together, I have nothing to say about the things that have happened over the years, but I do believe that if we can work together as one unit, us being us, and we're working together to build a city of Minneapolis, working together along with the police department, things will have changed in the few years to come. So I explicitly ask that you give her a time to complete the work that she's already started, and I think it's a good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Graham. Chuck Turchek, and then Steve Kramer, if you would like to get ready, and Mark Anderson is after. Steve.
Madam Chair, committee members, Chuck Turchek, 2112 Portland, and thank you to the Public Safety Committee for continuing this hearing. I am disappointed that while the core values of MPD 2.0 are commitment, integrity, and transparency, the chief meets monthly with her citizens advisory council but in private. I am discouraged that the chief has involved this unaccountable, self-selected citizens advisory council more than she has the official citizens oversight body, the Police Conduct Oversight Commission, when the Department of Justice's Office of Justice Programs, and the National Initiative on Building Community Trust and Justice have come to Minneapolis. I am dismayed that Chief Harto declined to issue a public statement that it was inappropriate for the Minneapolis Police Department to be associated in any way with a raffle titled "Tased and Glazed." I am puzzled by the chief's assurance to me that the MPD does not actively recruit military veterans, but the MPD's Facebook page and a deputy chief say the opposite. I am curious as to why January 2, 2016, changes in the MPD policy and procedure manual had decreased the violation level for certain inappropriate language provisions when the chief had told me she would like to discipline inappropriate language, but they're only A-level violations. And here's the kiss of death: I support the reappointment of Chief Harto. The chief is open to criticism without being defensive and without surrendering her principles or viewpoints. For example, it's the suggestion of community members, she initiated a monthly opportunity for any citizen to come and sit down and have a one-on-one with the chief about any issue of concern. She hasn't had one since October, but I am assured those will be resuming. I doubt there's another city in the country of this size where the police chief affords community members such an opportunity. One community member testified at the Public Safety Committee hearing that the chief simply is slick, and I am more cynical than most people, but I think there's an openness with this chief that is rare, not only among police chiefs, but among public officials in general. You ought to approve this reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turchek. Mr. Kramer, and then Mark Anderson, and then Alan Morrison, I think.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee, Mayor Hodges. My name is Steve Kramer. I'm the president and CEO of Minneapolis Downtown Council. My business address is 81 South 9th Street. My home address is 4832 11th Avenue South. I'm here to offer our organizations and our membership strong support for the reappointment of Chief Harto. I agree with other speakers, it starts at the top, and the chief has created a culture within MPD in our experience that is open to partnerships, to creative approaches across a wide spectrum of activities to make our communities, specifically our downtown, safe, and we greatly appreciate that. In recent months, we have become involved with the aforementioned National Initiative, and it's clear from the staff of that group that in addition to political leadership of the city, without the chief's leadership, that effort would not be here, and I'm convinced that effort will pay dividends. On more of a personal note, I'm not quite as longstanding a resident as Pastor Jones, but I have lived in Minneapolis and worked here since 1979. I first got to know Janee when she was walking the beat at Chicago and Franklin, and she was making that, at that time troubled intersections safe for basically immigrant-owned businesses. She was making TV parks safe for families who lived in the Phillips neighborhood and wanted to play there, make that park safe. And while her career has advanced significantly since then, she's at the top of the food chain, I've got to believe that those values that she learned and that work that she did at Chicago and Franklin in those early years helped inform her every decision, and that gives me comfort as a longstanding resident of this community. So strongly urge you to support the chief's reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Anderson, and then Alan Morrison, and then Lisa Clements.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the council. My name is Mark Anderson. I'm Executive Director of Barbara Snyder Foundation. A personal note, let me just say, four generations of my family live here in the city of Minneapolis. So I have a strong interest in safety here in our city. I started interacting with the police department in the year 2000 when Barbara Snyder died in a police call. She was in a mental health crisis, and there was a deadly force confrontation. She had a edge weapon and was aggressive and lost her life. We began to work with the police department and implementation of a program called Crisis Intervention Team Training, but Crisis Intervention Team is more than a training, it's a community-wide program. It involves de-escalating crisis situations. It was a program that began around the concept of a mental health crisis, psychiatric crisis, but really, police officers don't respond to people when they're having a good day. People are in crisis when there's a 911 call. And so it's a training that helps communicate, de-escalate that crisis situation so no one gets hurt. Police don't get hurt, community members don't get hurt, and everybody's able to go home at the end of the day. This program, it's been growing in the city, and Chief Harto has been a huge supporter of this effort. It's really about de-escalation, it's also about communication training. We're at a moment today in our country where we're thinking about that whole question of law enforcement, communication, police, community relations. How do we work together? How do we deal with the difficult issues that we call on law enforcement to deal with? And I just say that Chief Harto has been a huge supporter of this. She's an accessible person. I don't, when people want to meet, they're able to get in and meet with her and talk about how can we work together. She's forward-thinking, she's a problem solver, but she also has a vision for the future of the city.
Sir, if you could wrap it up, please.
And she's, yeah, exactly, thank you. And she's community-oriented. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is it Mr. Morrison? I thought I couldn't read it very well.
All right, like a doctor, so it's fine. Thank you. Alan Morrison, Minneapolis. My, I've lived here about 20 years. About two months ago, I mean, 20 months ago, I had an incident with the Minneapolis Police. Me being a law-abiding citizen, single parent, I thought I can make an appointment to see what I thought was my chief. I'm against the reappointment because as the few people in front of me say she's willing to meet with them, I have attempted 20 times to meet with her or someone out of her office about police misconduct, false police reports. I'm a 51-year-old person with no criminal record. I was choked unconscious by the Minneapolis Police, filed a police report, tried to meet with somebody out of the chief's office. I was sent to Internal Affairs where they act like some thugs in the streets. I am fearful of the police. I shouldn't be. I'm a law-abiding citizen. Her willingness to meet with folks evidently is not willingness to meet with black individuals. And so I have no personal dealings with her because I've been down here 10 times and attempted 20 times to meet with her. It is ridiculous. I have just recently got a call back from the new head of the Internal Affairs who wanted me to make another complaint. I did this months ago, over a year ago, before, months, almost a year before the Jamar Clark, I mean, the, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous here, but I suffer from anxiety. I've never had that from my occupations with the police. You know, so I feel she represents certain parts of the city, but not my part. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Lisa Clements, and then Anthony Hines. Ms. Clements, did you? Anthony Hines, and then after Anthony Hines, Yolanda Har, I believe. Yes, sir.
Good morning, council. My name is Anthony Hines. I am here as a representative and president of the Minnesota chapter of the National Black Police Officers Association, and we are in support of Chief Harto. The Minnesota chapter of the National Black Police Officers Association supports the reappointment of Chief Harto. This letter of support is based in part upon Chief Harto's strong relationship with our association during her first term as chief of police. Our support of Chief Harto is also based on her commitment to take a focused and proactive strategy for addressing some of the very serious challenges African-American face today in our communities. Some of these challenges deal directly with public safety and efforts to build relationships of trust and legitimacy with those police officers that serve our community. In establishing that foundation of trust and legitimacy, it will require a change in organizational culture and one that must be rooted in accountability at all levels. The Minnesota MBPA believes Chief Harto has started that important policing paradigm shift within the MPD with MPD 2.0. Chief Harto has also shown her commitment through her actions by meeting with representatives of the Minnesota MBPA, supporting the members of her department that belong to our organization, and showing a willingness to take a lead on some of the challenges that exist in public safety in our communities. She encourages dialogue, collaboration, and explores opportunities that promote the safety and well-being of the city of Minneapolis. We recognize there will be challenges both internally and externally that present themselves as she seeks to shape a police department that serves its community members with their best interests at heart. However, in order for her to move that important work forward, she will realistically need more time to change the culture, seek guidance, collaborate with the community, and have the time to measure and evaluate her progress. By reappointing Chief Harto, you will grant her that valuable time needed to address the challenges that exist and build upon the great work so many in the community and MPD are actively engaged in to strengthen the city of Minneapolis. It is the Minnesota's MBPA's hope that you will consider our strong recommendation for Chief Harto's reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. I was just trying to note, are you with Metro Transit, and did you want to let us know your title?
Lieutenant.
All right, thank you, lieutenant.
Previous to Minneapolis Police.
Okay, thank you. Yolanda Har, and then Ed Anderson, and then Stephen Colton.
My name is Yolanda Hare. Yeah, I'm a citizen of North Minneapolis. I'm also a public school teacher and a writer. I am here to oppose the reappointment of Chief Harto. The most interaction that I've had with the police happened as I occupied the 4th Precinct. While I was there, I saw police officers jeer at protesters and rile them up. I saw them point weapons. I felt them shove batons through a fence and hit me. I've been maced by them. I am not, I am a law-abiding citizen. I've never done anything wrong, and yet violence was afflicted upon me and upon protesters, protesters who brought chili, and they brought their children, and they brought their love of North Minneapolis. And my question is, were they operating the 4th Precinct under your jurisdiction? Do you take control out of the out-of-control police officers that were operating so violently that the Department of Justice is investigating them? Or are they just rogue, and are you okay with having a police department that is entirely out of your control? That's, you know, that's my primary problem. The other thing is that people talk about her trying to build community and build trust, but I wonder how that's possible if she demonizes the citizens that she polices, particularly the citizens of North Minneapolis, who are not thugs and are not monsters and are not armed. The only weapons I saw at the 4th Precinct were the ones being pointed at me by police and the ones that were shooting unarmed protesters, and yet we are being called thugs, and this is how we're supposed to be brought together. Her whole policy of demonizing peaceful protesters and citizens of North Minneapolis and then expecting us to come and trust her is failed, and I think her administration has failed.
Thank you, ma'am. Ed Anderson, and then Stephen Colton, and then Jabril Said.
Good morning. My name is Ed Anderson. I was born in Minneapolis in 1950, so I've got some seniority. I've seen a lot of changes. Most recently, I was assigned to the Cub Foods in North Minneapolis. We built that store in 2004, working very closely with a lot of the council members and Minneapolis Police Department. I have had the pleasure of serving on committees with Chief Harto, and one thing I can say that she does very clearly, she does what you all do well: listen. And she's listened to the needs of business, nonprofits, faith-based community, and the citizens. And I firmly believe she will be a great police chief. Give her the time. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't see someone else coming up. I might have said the name wrong. Oh, I'm on for it. I'm having some eyesight problems.
My name is Stephen Carlton. I live in Echo, the Uptown area, and in the interest of brevity, I have provided each of you, mayor and the city council, a one-page comment about my background to speak on the subject, and how I got to meet Janee, and how I supported her. In fact, I think that former city councilman, Tut Hill, and US Marshal Sharon Lipinski and others like Tim Dolan would know that nobody, there was nobody who pushed more to promote Janee Harto than myself. And hence, unfortunately, I don't know if this book on police field operations and patrol operations is in their library, but it should be read because I am very, very concerned that there is not plainclothes patrols and active patrols in the area by the university. There is no excuse why students, some of which I know, have to fear going to their classes. It is terrible, and this should not, and I assume she's going to be reappointed, but please put pressure on her to have effective patrol operations. It's basic. If necessary, I'll gift to the city a copy of Police Field Operations. But seriously, I trust, I, my parents always said, if you make a mistake, own up to it. I do, as they say, I really feel that Janee will be reappointed, but please, please, please assure that more operations are taken to assure, because someday I'm going to read in the paper about somebody being killed or raped, and I don't want that to happen. I was born in this city, and I really expect a lot more from our police department. I know I was on staff years ago, and we worked, the university hospitals, with two police chiefs. We had decoys that I furnished from hospital staff along with plainclothes patrol agents.
And sir, if you could wrap it up, please.
When at a time when, in the 70s, when there was a lot of crime, and because of their effective operation, that crime ended, people were put in jail, and that's what should happen now. But truly, I think that the operations of the patrol operations of the city should, something should be done because it's not what it should be for a city of this kind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize for misreading your name. Jabril Said, yes, sir, and then Dave Bickin, and then BJ Smith.
Good morning. It's an honor for me to be here, and I'm delighted to speak on behalf of the reappointment of Chief Renee Harto. She embodies the three core values that the police are, Minneapolis police are committed, commitment, integrity, and transparency. I have worked with the chief, and I know the mayor, Mayor Hodges, and the chief are committed that Minneapolis becomes more diverse city for the citizens, and I believe every citizen, as a citizen of this city, as a citizen of our country, it's everybody's interest, everybody's responsibility to be, to work with the police officers. I believe, as a president of Somali-American citizens, I believe the police are part of the community, they're an extension of our community. So we, yes, we have challenges, yes, we have issues, but the question is, are we going to build on what the chief and the mayor and all of you have done for the past few years, or are we just going to abandon? I think we can build on and be better as a community, and I affirm and support the reappointment of Chief Renee. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bickin, and then BJ Smith, and then John Shragel.
Thank you. I'm Dave Bickin, Minneapolis. I have mixed feelings about the chief. I think there has been some positive improvements over our previous chief. Her promotions to leadership have definitely been a big improvement over Chief Dolan. I've been pleased to work on the Early Intervention System Committee, and I think there's some sincere commitment to making some positive change in that. The chief is also clearly very good at public relations, and there are times when that's definitely a good thing, but it's not when it comes to covering up misconduct, and I point particularly to the murders of Terrence Franklin and more recently Jamar Clark. She has been defending the indefensible. Because I have seen some improvements versus Dolan, and because of the national attention, I thought perhaps the response to Jamar Clark's shooting might be better, you know, but I'm still too naive. Chief Harto, backed by you, the city council, and the mayor, has done everything wrong. We have not seen a good investigation, and we have not seen a good handling of the protests that resulted from that. As guilty as the officer is who fired the shot in the heat of the moment, those who engage in the cover-up deliberately with plenty of time to make conscious decisions, and those who did not deal with problem cops before they kill, those people are more guilty. In fact, at this point, we still don't even know which of the officers shot Jamar Clark. That's intolerable. This is simply a cover-up. While I think the chief does not deserve reappointment for those instances, I think any other chief appointed by this mayor and approved by this council realistically would be worse. Real change has to come from you.
Thank you, Mr. Bickin, BJ Smith, and then I may be saying this. Go ahead.
How y'all doing? All right. So everybody knows, that's the clock right there, you watch that, right? Okay, two minutes. Listen, I support the chief, and I support the chief because in the incidents that happened in our community, Mad Dads has been allowed, and let me introduce myself, BJ Smith, the national president of Mad Dads, local founder of Mad Dads here in Minneapolis, and because of the fine leadership in this community, our chapter is the best in the country, and so thank you for the support that you've given us over the years. In the 15 years of doing this work here, I've had relationships with a number of chiefs, and I just want to say Chief Harto has believed in the cultural diversity that we must have on our police force, and we've been working as advisory committee to do that, to bring colors, people, officers of color on the police force, and we need that, we need that desperately. And we also need to teach our young people that they need to keep their records clean, and so we've been working to teach our young people to do that. Some facts, some facts that I know, because of the last 1,239 hours that we spent on the streets this summer trying our best to reduce crime, that we had some results from that, and results from our partnership with the police department and the city of Minneapolis. And those results were that 126 men and women actually got full-time employment, and the result of that, that generated revenue of $2.1 million in wages to the city, which is a positive thing. So when you look at what happens when an organization like Mad Dads responds to a critical incident, a homicide, a shooting, or just to something that's going on, gang members on the streets versus the police department showing up, there is something that happens. And so we can't arrest away the problem, we realize we can't do that, but we can't have impact with partnerships with the police department. So I support the chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and I think it's John Shana Fragel. Yes, sir, come forward, and then Arnetta Phillips, and then Andrea Braun, or Brown. Yes, sir.
Hi. I am here, I echo a lot of what Dave Bickin said. I feel like whatever, if she doesn't get appointed, I'll just appoint somebody worse. And I feel, I was at the 4th Precinct, and I saw the cops act like thugs, and it was a thug behavior having Jamar Clark murdered, and I believe there is a cover-up, and you're not doing your job, city council, in giving out the information about that murder in North Minneapolis. So I guess I'm kind of indifferent because you just appoint somebody worse, so thanks.
Thank you, sir. Arnetta Phillips? Yes, ma'am? And then Andrea, I think it's Brown or... And then Andrea, I think it's Brown or Braun, and I apologize.
Good morning, councilman and chair. I also have a letter that I need to read as well. Dear Minneapolis Councilman, I write this letter of recommendation on behalf of Janee Harto and strongly support her reappointment of Police Chief of Minneapolis, serving another term of our community. Her reappointment is necessary, as her work as chief is evident through the continuous of her strong and attested desire to improve community relations through the police department. Our city experiences several tragedies since she has, has served as chief, and without question, her first response has always sought for justice and investigation over matters of concern, not always popular, but fair, in my opinion, in seeking the truth without politics. I have had several conversations with Chief Harto, and I can say that she is continuously driven in equality for all persons. I have no doubt that she has been fair and has tried to change the community negative perspective of the police force, even attempting to remove any officers who have not performed ethnically across race relations. Our police chief is not a bigot, but fair and equitable, and deserves to continue her vision and professionalism to bring safety and protection in our city. I write this letter to you with clear conscience and with peace in my heart. I believe in our chief and what she is trying to do, and to write anything differently would be an affront to my conscience. Sincerely, Bishop Richard D. Howell, Jr. of Shiloh Temple International Ministries. I myself also stand before you today in favor of the recommendation of reappointment of our Minneapolis Police Chief, Janee Harto. Let's be honest, no matter what you hear-